I'd like to leave you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for two members of our school community who recently passed away, middle school teacher Mr. James Communell and therapist with the Delphoyes Therapy in Schools program, Ms. Shonda Beasley. Mrs. Arbisak, roll call.
Here.
Blazavich?
Here.
Donahue?
Here.
Engler?
Here.
Edis?
Here.
Copet?
Here.
Yuhos? Senzo? Weirson?
Here.
Item two, presentations. Dr. Solomon?
Mr. President, there are no presentations this evening. We will have a short discussion later on.
Thank you. No addendum items tonight. Hearing of the citizens, public comment. In order to speak at this time, the following must be met: must be a Westmifflin Woodaker or Duke in resident, current employee, or taxpayer. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels. Direct comments to the board president and/or superintendent, and remarks will be limited to three minutes per person. Our only speaker tonight is Ms. Diane Stenessick.
Good evening. Congratulations to you guys for winning the election. Very happy for that. Twenty-eight oh three, Glenny Lane Extension. Page two, my question is on A Finance number two, the transfer of twenty thousand to, from the general fund to the athletic fund as to what that is for, the purpose. Page three, under invoices, the ninety-eight hundred sixty dollars for October, other professional services, I'm not sure if it's just for October or if they're previous or just rolling through the door finally. The other comment is nice to see a nice chunk of change for the business privilege tax. Also, the online sales, twenty-one thousand, two hundred four dollars, very nice. The other question I have is more towards the committee agenda under building and grounds. There's a list of several items, one of said being a new truck. And did we not just purchase a truck last month for eighty-eight some thousand dollars, in which I am going to do a write to note because I would like to see a copy of the sales agreement, because essentially the school district is paying cash, and I would be hoping that the dealership would give a decent discount toward the price of the vehicle since they are technically paying cash. Because I know when I bought my vehicle, and because of the fact that I didn't finance and pay cash, I did get a nice amount of money off of the purchase. The other question, the open contracts, I'm sure Ed will be going over those, but I don't know if I remember hearing this or not, I could be wrong, but is there a list on the website of all of the contracts that we have and when they are due to be redone? I know you said you have a list of all of them, but I don't know if it's available out on the website. It would be nice so that we could keep track of some of them. I for one want to keep track of legal tax service, because if you don't pay attention to them, it automatically renews. And that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. And we will try to address those points as they come up in the agenda. Moving on to information items.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, Ms. Monroe Rau, and the high school saved promise in teen titles. You received a one thousand dollar grant from Eradicate Hate Initiative from the AIU. The grant will be used in the school to create a safer space for all students.
Thank you, Dr. Solomon, and congratulations, Ms. Rau. Board secretaries report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items this evening. Number one, executive sessions from October. Number two, the approval of amendments from October, and the second reading and approval of six policies.
Any discussion on any of these items?
Straightforward.
Thank you, Ms. Arbisak. Item seven, Director of Finance and Operations report. Mr. Weir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under A Finance, we have number one, real estate tax refunds. This is for the six years prior to this and also in 2025, that amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Question typically gets asked, that is for the Pizza Hut on Route fifty-one. Number two, transfer of twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to the athletic fund. We do that darn near every sports season, for fall, winter, and spring. Athletics uses that money for things such as paying game workers, paying referees or officials. That's the kind of money, that's their pot of money that they use for those things. Other items such as transportation, the general fund takes care of those.
And when we get money that comes in from online sales, does that go into the general fund, or does it go into athletics?
Goes into the general fund.
Okay, so this kind of allows them to access that money that they had in from something like ticket sales in the first place?
Certainly.
Sort of the way that I think about it, is it's access to money that in some cases they were bringing in in the first place.
That would be true. That would be true.
And then can, I know we always see these real estate tax refunds for X number of years. I think we've talked about it before, but why sometimes does it say 2019, sometimes it says 2024, 2025? Maybe, Mr. Lucas, you can speak to why there isn't just a number for how many years back it goes. Like those 2019 ones.
Sure. So some of these, I mean, the appeals go back as far as the year, yeah, the initial filing, and so some of these appeals have simply been pending for some period of time going back to 2019.
Yeah, so they get caught up in the litigation and the courts, and then once they finally have reached a resolution, we basically have to pay back through 2019 because that was when it was initially filed.
Right, for some of them. And I don't know, again, of the ones that are being addressed in this particular board item, I don't know how many of those include 2019, but certainly I can.
Right. It's actually one parcel, and just, there's an amount for each of those years. The total is the fifteen thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars.
Thank you.
Under letter B, purchasing and contracting. Number one, we have an MOU with the AIU. They're going to make sure or assist us with our Every Student Succeeds Act and also Title One, this all revolves around Title One funds. This is something that we do on an annual basis. Number two is an agreement with Millersville University so that students that are in their nursing program can do field work here in our district. Number three is psychologist consultant services at a rate of ninety dollars an hour. This is with solely in health. This is because our employee is on a leave.
Any discussion on these items? Eight, financial reports?
Thank you, Mr. President. A through C as presented, then D refunds subtracted from expenditures. I will note the federal subsidy that's labeled as access-pde. This is part of what I had discussed a couple of months ago, that when I got here, we had very little access money that had been sort of set aside with the state and with the AIU. We've gained considerable amount of money in two years to the tune of probably seven-hundred thousand dollars total between the two different entities. The AIU has money that they submit on our behalf for some of the services they provide such as occupational therapy and physical therapy, and then we also submit things through the state, to the state. We have a consultant Suzanne Fleeson, or Fleeson DeSilva or DeSilva Fleeson, Suzanne, we'll leave it as. She has worked with Mr. Porter, and they have really made a difference. And so this year, we're able to take advantage of that, and, you know, this is the chunk that's coming from the state money that we have. At some point, we'll have another one from the AIU also. And so that'll be a big help towards our budget, and these are for services that are provided to our special education students. Moving on to E, tax collectors' report. As I had mentioned, last month, we had just gotten a check for our business taxes, which was over a million dollars. Nine hundred twenty-six thousand of that was for business privilege tax and one hundred sixty-two thousand for mercantile tax. So that's why you have those larger figures there. Property tax, that's just what we received in real estate taxes last month. And then online sales, we did have over twenty-one thousand dollars, so a robust month for online sales.
Mr. Weir, I have a question.
Yes.
On business privilege and mercantile. It says QTR, is that quarter?
Yes.
So which quarter, like what is that period of time?
So that would be the July first through September thirtieth.
Okay.
I had a quick question about the light bulb at the high school. Does this make us even? Are we done with that? Does this cover all of the bills for that?
So we did receive five thousand dollars from an insurance company. The balance is due from the family. This is just the start of the family, so we'll probably be seeing these on a fairly consistent basis as long as the family is consistent with payment.
Got you. Thank you.
Item nine, invoices, bills payable, purchase orders?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one through seven with these general fund invoices. Number one, filing fees with legal tax service. Number two, Cavalier Court reporting. So this is for expulsion hearings that took place back in September. I believe the day of the meeting, we got the invoice. When I say day of the meeting last month, we wanted to get that payment out in a timely fashion, so we're asking for ratification instead of approval for that. Number three is, again, legal tax service for different filing fees and other associated fees with conducting business on our behalf. Then number four through seven are the monthly Andrews and Price invoices. The question was asked about number four specifically, the other professional services. If I am correct, four of them were October invoices. Two of them were earlier that had been submitted to insurance and came back to us. One of them was for over eight thousand dollars with a due process for special education student. So that is what made up those professional services for number four. Then B, bills, P cards, purchase orders, cash dispersment reports, those are in your board.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Item ten, district operations?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under district operations, we have no items at this time.
Okay, eleven, superintendent's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under superintendent's report, we have, under A, student services, we have a settlement agreement with a student as presented from the attorneys. Under B, we have our student activities. C, our student fundraising. D, conferences as presented.
I have a question, I have a question or comment. Student activities, I know we put a pause on school-funded student activities with the impasse on the state budget, kind of over now, or is that going to be something that'll be announced or is already being announced, that those are turning those back on? Yeah, we're reallowing student activities.
Well, and as long as the funds were not coming out of the general fund for transportation, they were permitted.
Right.
And then if they were used in our district vehicles, they were permitted.
Right.
So there was only very few.
Few, but now the situation is there are no limitations. We're back to normal, basically.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Items twelve, thirteen, fourteen will be covered in the regular meeting?
Yes, sir. That's all personnel issues.
And then fifteen, board president's correspondence I have had this evening. Sixteen, executive session discussion. Prior to this meeting, we held an executive session where we discussed personnel, labor relations, and litigation matters. Seventeen, board reports. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Solz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under committee meetings, first one we'll go over is buildings and grounds. We do have results from our lead water testing as per the Act thirty-nine. We did get that back, Mr. Zidik, and we were clear on everything, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And they tested only where drinking water or cooking water was used and so forth.
Twenty-two different places.
Throughout the district.
Example, twenty-two, yes.
We have an issue with what is called an acid pit. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but from where our science labs are in the high school, there are emergency showers which have floor drains which then feed into an acid pit with this, basically a pit with gravel in it with the incoming water up high and then the exiting water on the other side of the pit that it flows through and flushes. It is starting to back up now to the point where it's coming back into the classrooms. It's supposed to be cleaned every two years.
Yeah, it used to be cleaned every two years. Wouldn't everyone do a lot of dissecting and that? Now it's not done as much. So everyone's relaxing and they're doing it every four or five years. I talked to Sandy Wells. She said the last time this was done was probably about eight years ago, so we're way past to do it. We've got our heat solidly. So what they'll do, they'll come in, dissect some samples of rock away, they'll sample and see what is contaminated with, which we won't find that out until next Monday. It's not a big deal. This is part of what they do every time. Then a truck will come in, they'll suck all the gravel out and take it away, and then they'll refresh the gravel in the pit, and then we'll be good for another five, seven years, whatever.
Maybe we make it five years, get it on a plan here to rotate it through.
Our kids are not in any harm's current.
Not at all, no. We had a sewage backup one time. It was just a floor drain. It came up maybe two inches or so in one classroom. It was, that was the worst one of all. Within a matter of fifteen minutes, it went back down. It was all cleared. No fecal matter, nothing, just water, black water.
What's the actual cost or expected cost of it?
Right now, we're looking, by the time we get everything done, the testing and everything, it's going to be somewhere around thirty-six hundred dollars, thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Any other questions for acid pit?
No.
Roof drains at the middle school, we know we sent you a little update. We have a gentleman from Limbaugh here with us tonight to explain maybe the situation a little bit more clearer, but this was diagnosed back when, Mr. Zidik?
Well, since I've been here, we've had issues with the middle school roof leaking. We've had the roofers in here four or five times. They've done everything they could. Roofs are funny. Where the roof, where the water comes through the roof is the roofers. Soon as it breaks the roof on the inside, it turns over to plumbing. So the roofers were here, and they, like I said, four or five times, they went and tightened all their baskets they could, couldn't find nothing else. We still had problems. So we've asked a couple companies to come in and give us a, just to do an assessment on what we have. And Limbaugh is the one that came in, the last one, and they've done a really thorough investigation on that, have some pictures in that. I don't know if you guys have access. Oh, sure we did. And they're just here to answer any questions that you should have with that. We're going to be doing about two hundred twenty feet. Two hundred fifteen. Two hundred fifty feet, we're going to be replacing. It's cast iron. It's above the ceiling line, so it's above the ceiling line, meaning we have to use cast iron. We looked at the possibility, maybe go PVC. It's not allowed by code. Because they use above the ceiling as a return plenum for our air conditioning, so it's sucking back everything. It's above the ceiling. My thought is if there's a fire, is just bring in all the combustibles.
Yeah, so what happens with PVC is they have, there has to be fire in everything up in that plenum, and with PVC, it's a toxic gas room when it starts melting. So to code, you can't have anything like that in the terminal.
And that's why we're looking to put, replace all the cast iron.
And the cast iron is what was used in the first place. That's what, it's a part-for-part full equal replacement, right? It's the same thing going in for what was there. Should we be concerned that we'd have to replace it all over again in ten years?
Well, that's kind of part of, yeah, it's supposed to last about a hundred years, fifty to a hundred years, cast iron, and this has lasted thirteen. We're, it's attributed to right now, building movement, the way the building's moving everywhere.
Who attributed, your assessment attributed to the building movement? Where is it in the building, like physically located?
So there's a couple up in the second floor, in two of the rooms, two thirteen to two oh two.
Okay.
Out in hallway between two oh four and two oh six, and then down in the wrestling room, in the hallway there, go into the boiler room, and then into room one fifty-three, there's also damage.
So are these drain pipes or roof drain pipes?
Roof drain. The roof, the rainwater goes in through the roof and it runs in the building and then.
Sure, okay. And we think it's the shifting and settling that's causing those to, are they cracking?
Yes.
And we want to move on this as fast as possible. We'd be looking to have it happen over the holiday break.
Correct, correct. But this is also part of the middle school.
Yes, but we would want to.
Oh, no, no.
Have this done.
We want to do it right. Well, I agree, but do we want to address that?
Well, we would have to back.
It will be. This has already been sent to the listeners. They're going to add it to the litigation and the mediation.
That's, that's all I was trying to point out. It's, it's, yeah.
Can we complete it in Christmas break time?
Yeah.
Yeah, how long? How long does it take to complete this?
So if we're able to do it over Christmas break and starting now with the approval, we will have the time to make sure we have the manpower to go in there and get it done within that time.
Okay.
What's, what's the number?
Eighty-eight, no, I think it's eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand.
That will be part of the litigation.
Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your diagnosis and assessment and also the information you provided us tonight.
Limbaugh will be sending us a letter of intent. We'll sign off on, get it back then, they'll start ordering the material upon receipt of that.
And so this would essentially be a ratification if we were to vote on it?
Yes, next week.
Next week.
Are those materials readily available?
So that was another consideration with the timeline, was some of these do have three weeks of lead time.
Yeah.
So the quicker we get moving on it, the, you know, we want to make sure we have everything in place. That way when we can get in here, we'll start right away and get everything taken care of.
Okay.
Mrs. Engler, you're comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gatos?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much again.
New auditorium update. I'll lend to Mr. Weir as well as Mr. Zidik. Pittsburgh Stage has been in. They've hung the curtains, the hoist.
has been in. They've hung the curtains, the hoist, so forth. The seats have been tested and they have been found to have some of the soot on those. And now we're waiting to, waiting for the final results of the testing and also the procedure for cleaning or the next step if we need other seating, if they're contaminated and so forth. We're sort of sitting there. Firewater does have the electricians in there. They're changing out the lights. They've cleaned out most of the MDF room. So we are ready to make the switch over with all the electronics and so forth during the Christmas break and get our holiday break as well. Mr. Weir?
So let the board know, I just became aware of this today. Mr. Coker, who handles the auditorium for us, let us know about two concerns with the auditorium sound. So the one is there's cabling that runs from the sound booth to behind the stage and then another shorter run from behind the stage to the orchestra pit. That cable should be a shielded cap five cable and what was installed was an unshielded cap five. So we are going to be moving forward with changing that. The company that did that was Good Sounds. They were the ones that were awarded that portion of the auditorium contract overall from our RFP process. They did finish that up right before the fire occurred. So this has nothing to do with the fire. But we are going to be moving forward with informing them about this and getting this taken care of pronto.
Was it specified for shielded cable in the specs?
So what was said was cabling would be of the type that is necessary and where the jacks are for these cables. Like, there's literally a label right below the jack that says it has to be shielded cabling. So we're going to take a photo of that, right?
And so this is, the intention is that this is on the company. They did not provide the proper.
Yes. We'll have conversations business to business. And if that is unsuccessful, we'll have conversations solicitor to attorney.
Yeah, that should not have been missed.
Another aspect is as part of the sound system redo, we got new speakers. We did not get new amplifiers or anything along those lines, but we did have new speakers as part of the auditorium renovation project. Because of the fire and the corrosiveness of the soot, the amplifiers had to get replaced. So we now have newer, better amplifiers. We also have the newer, better speakers. But the wire that's running between the two of them is the old wire that really isn't sufficient to make best use of the new sound system that we have. So we are going to, the people that are there right now, the electricians from TS Electric, they are going to let us, they're going to give us a quote for doing the replacement of that speaker wire. I don't think it's going to be a huge number, but that's not part of the fire because the speaker wire wasn't damaged.
Right.
But if we want that auditorium to be the best that it can be, I think that's a very wise investment on our part to get the better speaker wire so we can make full use of the newer sound equipment that we have.
So this is just an upgrade because the cabling was not hurt at all by, by the fire and the company that was providing everything was not required to put different cabling in. So that's.
Yes, because we're still going to have the old amplifiers.
It becomes our situation to try to upgrade it properly. Okay, thank you.
It seems to me we kind of have like an HDTV that we're using in low definition with the other wires.
Yes, it's a, it's a good way of looking at it. It's, yes, it's an apt comparison. So I will try to have that information to you as soon as I get it, but I'd like to have it on for next week's meeting so that we can move forward in a timely fashion as best we can with all things auditorium related.
Is it, I hate to ask a technical question, but the cabling, is it open trade primarily, which would minimize costs?
I don't know that answer. I don't want to, I just don't know that answer.
All right, thank you.
I could find out, but I don't know that answer. Another thing with the auditorium, the facade of the auditorium as you're sitting in the seats and above on the sides and then on the bottom of, you know, below the stage, we had had a stained wooden finish. We believe that covering that with drywall and then painting will be a better, fresher look for when we finally do bring the auditorium back online. I don't have a date. I'm sure somebody's going to ask, do you have a date? I don't have a date. Everything is right now on schedule for the end of January, but that does not include seating. And seating is a big iffy thing right now. So we can't say that end of January is the timeframe. But nonetheless, the facade, if we're going to do the auditorium the way that we want to do it, the facade needs addressed. We have people here that are able to do the work. They have the lift that they can reach and do the high work. Will be, if the board gives their approval to, at least in theory, because I don't have a dollar figure, I think it's probably going to be somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000. That will be a district cost. It will not be part of the insurance claim. But again, as far as having a top-flight fine arts facility, we believe that is what would, what would best serve our students, their families, and our visitors to our shows.
And there's no way for us to match what's still existing up on the stage with the front of the stage.
My, my only question is like, that's wood.
Yes.
The durability of the wood in the front and base of the stage when kids are sitting on stage and kicking it with their feet. You're telling me they're going to be kicking drywall? Like, is that, is that reasonable? And the second thing is like, acoustically, is there a reason that's wood?
No. I asked Mr. Coker that if we would change that because right behind it's block.
Okay.
He said, no, that has none to do with the sound or how anything comes off that stage.
I get, I don't mind like the facade around the stage. My concern is like, kids kicking it or running into it or equipment running into it or, that seems like probably, the wear and tear on that might be something to think about.
But again, drywall is a lot easier to replace than hardwood and so forth.
Yeah.
I mean, five-inch drywall.
What color are you making it? Like, what color are you thinking?
Well, we were going to ask Mr. Coker. We were saying white. We were saying white, but then we need to know what kind of reflection and so forth happened, so.
Because it's dark for a reason, I would imagine. It doesn't show all like the smudge marks and.
Dirt.
Dirt and footprints and everything else that go into it. I err on Coker's side, but I was thinking black or something brown or dark.
The stage would be black.
The front of the stage is what I'm thinking. The facade on the front where the wood is now.
Well, there's no wood there now.
No, there's no wood there now. Right, right. No, I know you got to fix it.
And I don't even think we could use the wood that was on there.
Yeah. I'm just, wear and tear, that's what, like, drywall's fine, but. Okay. Do you guys, are you guys going to have a number next week?
Yes.
Okay. And like, are they going to be able to do that over break? Is that the idea?
It'll probably get done before the break.
Okay.
Yeah, as they do the front, they'll just keep going right up to.
Anybody have like a sketch or a design on what you think it might look like before we approve it?
It's, it's not actually going to change what it was.
Yeah.
It's just going to have drywall instead of wood. That's.
So this is mostly like an aesthetic choice, yes. And if, if we were, like, it is damaged, right? It's not there right now, as you said.
The front of the stages, but everything up on top of the stage is still there.
I see. So we have to, have to then.
Are you going to take it off or are you going to build over it?
We're going to go over it.
Go over it.
I just don't remember what it looked like. I know it's wood.
And, and we talked about refinishing it, but it's veneer. So you can't sand it because then you're going to get through it.
Right, right. I get it, I get it.
Mr. Zidik, anything you want to add from the auditorium?
No, I'm, no. On that stage part, why put wood at the bottom if we're going to paint it a dark color? And that way it would alleviate Mr. Blazevich's concerns about kicking or.
Listen, I'm not a professional with stage design or anything like that. I'm not trying to be a picky. I'm just saying like, that's where kids kick and things get bumped and drywall's not.
Now, up high though, wouldn't matter. Like, stage level up, but just where they sit on the front of the stage and kick underneath them, they'd be like.
That's, that's what I was thinking.
An apron, yeah, that's what.
I would like to say an apron. Like a, like a skirt like we have on the tables here.
I mean.
I think we need some variables.
Or pins, or picture, pictures of what you're trying to. I'm trying, I'm having a tough time seeing.
I'm trying to remember this and I think a picture or sketch or something because a drywall all the way around just sounds not aesthetically pleasing at all. I'm just throwing that out there. I think the wood looked nice.
Yeah, well, it's dated.
Again, I'm not a stage designer, though.
It's dated. Okay, we'll, we'll get some prices. We'll get some pictures.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Sorry to be picky.
All right. Our new truck, we're going to ask Mr. Zidik, give us a little update on our new truck. That's what that was about, Mrs. Zidik. We were just giving an update. We're not asking for another one. And when we do purchase that, we do through, we go through Co-Stars, which guarantees us the state, lowest state pricing within that cohort. Well, that's why, that's why we go through Co-Stars. Mr. Zidik?
I would pick that up. I believe it was Monday or Thursday we picked that up. We've been slowly just taking the stuff out of the old truck, putting it into the new one. Nice truck. I can have it here next, for next meeting. I'll have it out front for you guys. I never thought about having it here.
Right here, out front, right here.
Yeah, I won't fit there, believe me. It's big. It's everything we needed, maybe a little bit more. I mean, it's a nice, nice truck. Nice depth. There should be no problems at all with this thing. I mean, it's just, it's nice. And I appreciate you guys letting us get it because it's definitely needed. They're, they're, they're pretty beat up. And this is a nice first step, beautiful first step, actually.
And you mentioned it has the capacity to be able to fulfill some of the needs of one of our other vehicles as well.
Yes, it has a salt sprayer in the back. It's still in the back. We're not going to take that off since we're so close to the season we might need it. Has a plow on the front. I mean, it's, it's a great work truck. It really is.
Great.
So we're going to ask the committee to go ahead and recommend we put the lead water testing results on the agenda for approval, the acid pit for approval, the roof drains, and we will put the speaker wire. And then we will get some information. Something else besides the speaker wire, besides the front of the stage?
Or no, it was the board.
Shielded, shielded cable.
Well, we're going to take care of that. We're not paying for that. We're with the company, so. So we asked the committee, the speaker wire for the auditorium, the roof drains, the acid pit, and the water testing. Mr. Gads?
Yeah.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, on the safety and transportation, we did sit through a presentation with Chief Boyle on the open gate metal detectors. This is the ones that set apart and walked through where you've probably seen them at the stadium or PPG. For the price right now, we're going to hold off. Even with the open gate, the ones we looked at, the furthest they could be put apart was, I believe, 36 inches. So it wasn't like the ones you really see at the stadium where herds walk through. And for the money, we could probably buy three of the ones we currently use for the price of one of those. And when you go through the open gate and it does go up, you're wanting that person anyways, just as if you came through one of our Garrett machines. So we're going to hold off on that, but that's something we were looking at. We still have some money left over from the PCCD grant. We're looking to get, update our hand radios for our security and police officers. And we are looking for solar cameras to put down on T's trail just so we're able to monitor that. So that's what we're going to look to move that PCCD money to. All right, finance. Mr. Weir, you want to take out?
Sure. Start off with the postage machines. Postage machines are one of the contracts that are up, they're up at the beginning of 2026. So we asked for proposals based on different preferences given to us by our secretaries because they're the ones that use the machines more than anybody else. So we have gotten proposals back. We need some more time to clarify. We have a feeling that we have two different machines, one at the high school, one at the middle school. We're not completely certain if they gave us a quote for one or for two with their, with the information that they gave. So we want to get that information. And then we also want to take a little bit of time to talk with the secretaries to say, you know, this is the information that we got back and here's what we're thinking. We want to get their feedback on what they're thinking also. So I think this will be a December agenda item. Open contracts for 2026. Yes, we do have a list of those. It is not currently on the website. We can put it on the website. I think specifically legal.
Twelve, including the posting machines?
Oh, for 2026?
Three, six, yes. Maybe, I think 13.
Yeah, I think if we can, even if you have, if you have the full list, even the years that they're up, that they expire, not just 2026, put the whole rotation in there.
That's what's on the list. The legal tax service is July 1 of 2027 with 180-day notice. That's on the list also. So we can do that. So we had talked in the spring as part of the budget process, what do we want to do with these contracts? We had indicated that we felt that putting them out, each one of these is a little bit different. So they wouldn't necessarily all be requests for bids or requests for proposals. There'd be some level of individuality or customization, if you will, for each of these. I am recommending that we do that just in terms of trying to be completely open and fair. The professional services that we receive, which include our audit, our insurance, and our legal services, I would recommend that we do those also in addition to the 12 vendors that are up in 2026.
Is legal tax in that list?
Not till 2027.
Yeah, but they're on the list.
They're accounted for.
Yes.
Like, just a holistic list, not just what's ready to expire, but just everything that, and their expiration date. Is that what you're going to put up?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns included with that?
Thank you for doing that.
Sure. Financial software, we have talked about this last month. Mr. Blazevich indicated that he had some questions based on his experience that would be valuable for us to get feedback from. So the two finalists, I did get questions from Mr. Blazevich. We presented him, looked at the responses from Mr. Blazevich. Felt that both were satisfactory. One may have been stronger than the other, but both were satisfactory. Mr. Blazevich said, in essence, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, you know, either way would be fine. And then we got some more feedback on references. And I feel that moving forward with the Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit is in the best interest. CSIU is in the best interest of the district. The cost for the first year with implementation and, and the different modules that we would be using, which include HR and onboarding. and the different modules that we would be using, which include HR and onboarding, staff tracking, purchasing, uh, you know, it's a, it's a full robust package, was fifty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars. As I was talking to them, there was also an additional one thousand fifty dollars of one-time fee. So, that was fifty-three thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars. As we negotiated, uh, we ended up at fifty thousand dollars, which was a seven-point-one decrease from that fifty-three thousand eight hundred eighteen. Uh, so, the first year cost for the district would be fifty thousand dollars. And after that, would be less than that, but probably between forty-seven and forty-eight thousand dollars to start with the following year after that. And for comparison's sake, right now with ProSoft, it's about forty thousand dollars a year that we're spending for the software. So, it will be more, but there is much greater functionality with this new system.
And we talked a little bit about what's gonna happen with the old stuff. Can it, can it be imported in to the new software? Or it has to be retained through ProSoft? Or sto, we talked about storing it on campus, or storing it in cloud, or? Do we have like a determination on what's being recommended for that?
At this point, we haven't gotten that far. Uh, IT's been focused on some other things, but, um, we, one way, shape, or form, are going to keep our ProSoft data.
Right.
And whether that's in-house or whether that is, uh, you know, a cloud-based solution, probably somebody other than ProSoft.
Does CSIU import?
They can, they're only going to do like a year's worth of data.
One year prior, yeah.
And, uh, so, I think it, it's in our interest to have access to that data.
Right.
I think I shared how, not long ago, I was digging through stuff that was ten years old.
Yeah.
Uh, just within the last week or two, I had another time I was digging in through data that was ten years old. So, it's certainly what we wanna keep, but we don't have a solution for that yet. Uh, but we're not looking to go live until July with this. It's gonna be a very busy time between now and July to make that transition and implementation.
Jumping back real fast, sorry to do this to you. You mentioned that the room with the technology was cleaned out and ready for new things to be put in. Is there gonna be any lag time on getting that new material ordered? And is all that processed and placed for the auditorium space?
When you were asking for like the servers and everything? All the new servers are already put in, they're ready to get.
It's just a matter of switching it over?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, and I, the electric company that's under firewater has been working with Ford and our technicians very closely, so, yeah.
Sorry to jump around there, my head.
No.
Thank you.
Legitimate question, and we are, as far as the data is concerned, we're in a good place with getting everything in. And then we'll just hope that we're in a good place where we're going through Christmas break and making, bringing everything up in a live fashion. And hopefully, our computers and our camera system and everything else will be up and running for when we get back in January.
Are we asking the committee to recommend putting the software, financial software, on the agenda?
Yes, please.
Mr. Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Blaze?
Yeah.
Ms. Kobe?
And you'll have a copy of that updated contract in our folder to take a look at. It was updated, I think it was in there, it was in there last month. Or just put that one in there, just so everybody has a copy of the, what the run rate is per year. Okay.
And can you send that to me as well, Mr. Weir?
Sure.
Okay, athletic activities, uh, athletic uniforms that need to be purchased in the rotation for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Our football, girls' soccer, boys' and girls' basketball. Uh, Mr. Mayhaw's working, uh, to get some pricing. We are in Nike school, so, uh, all the uniforms will be Nike. Uh, no, Doc Solomon's been working closely with Mr. Mayhaw as well to make sure all the colors are West Mifflin colors. They all have the same font, uh, so that we start to become more cohesive in what our uniforms look like throughout the district.
Is this helmets too?
We buy helmets every year for the, we buy a number of helmets, and we rotate them. As we send them out to get certified, every year we get some back that do not get certified, and those are the ones we replace.
How long do they, how long do they have?
I wanna say four years, four or five years, it's like four or five year rotation. In the folder, I did put the full list of all the uniforms and when they come due again. So, so they're in there, they're four or five years old.
Everybody's on a cycle.
So, we'll be bringing that to the committee for approval. Our winter empower program is just getting set to begin, and that is the basketball for the four, five, and six, and the different activities for the, uh, one, two, and three students at the elementary schools. So, that should be getting started here shortly.
I hate, I hate to ask this, I'm gonna go back to the, uh, uniform question. Any chance we get to see like samples of what these things look like before we vote on it?
Yeah, you can.
Like pictures, like even just a photo?
Yeah, it'd be more than.
Usually in the book, they, they put one in there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, hopefully we can get that before, before we have to vote.
Mm-hmm. We did participate with the McDonald's High School Sports Digital Fundraiser Donation Day, uh, with the McDonald's down on Hoff Avenue. They are to send us a check, we just don't know when or how, how much. Mr. Mayhaw, I did talk to him, knows it's coming, it just hasn't arrived yet, and we don't know the amount.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
I don't wanna break protocol, but last month at the meeting, they were talking about resurfacing what Junes do to the basketball court to get them ready for basketball season. And you guys all agree that it has to be done, it's done yearly. Do you have to ratify that at next week's meeting that Junes approved it?
I don't know.
Prior to it being an agenda item?
I wasn't thinking about it. We could put it on there, but no, it got done, and it looks nice. They did, they did it last week.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was supposed to be an agenda item or not.
Well, I wouldn't be on the committee, because we already talked about it.
Right, but yeah.
We'll get it on the regular.
We'll get it, we'll get it on that.
Yeah, put it on.
That's, sorry.
Good catch.
Anything else for athletic activities?
Do you wanna talk about the classifications changes, or are you gonna talk about that next week, or have?
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't, that was news to me, I didn't.
I didn't, I, I don't have it memorized, who moved where. I know football came down to three, I know soccer dropped, so, we'll, we'll publish the list.
Yeah, or maybe he can be here to talk about it next week, since he's gonna talk about uniforms anyway.
Can you also reach out to Mr. Mayhaw about, um, the, how many kids are participating in the power garden? I'm just curious, um, how many participated in the fall?
In the arts and crafts?
How it's doing?
Yeah, get a little update on where things are at.
Athletic activities status update.
Yeah.
Yeah. I heard it's doing really well, but I'd like to, you know, actually.
Uh, it's always nice to offer these things, too. I think the kids appreciate having a chance to do something that's a little bit different.
Well, you can always have the opportunity to stop by and see them in action.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. Oh, you had mentioned to me about, um, kindergarten and first grade. Can you talk about that a little bit, or maybe put that as part of the updates, the little dribblers?
Let's get that squared away.
Details that was talked about. In development.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, technology, uh, the internet for the district has been down. Mr. Crawford is well aware of it and is working on getting that back up and running for us, hopefully sooner rather than later.
We don't know what the issue is?
No, at least he did tell me. Doc, Doc and I met with him, and really didn't come to any conclusion as to why it's doing what it's doing.
He just told me, he was gonna tell me the answer when he figures it out.
Yes.
All right, I, I know he's got kind of a patchwork fix here, but it'd be nice to get, make use of this.
We are still working on our artificial intelligence policy as we talk to, uh, Mr. Crawford. He was reaching out to another school district who seems to have pretty robust, uh, policy, so we're gonna look at that and bring that back to the technology and the policy committee once we get there. Uh, we do have in your folder three bids for VR software. At the beginning of school year, Mr. Getz put together a, uh, committee of teachers at all levels to start looking at different softwares for the VR goggles. Uh, they came up with the one, I believe the quote is for a little bit over nine thousand dollars, and that's a one-year subscription, uh, for the software to handle the, uh, the VR goggles. So, we're asking the committee to recommend putting that on the agenda.
I'm okay with that.
Blaze, Mr. Squires?
I'm final time.
Anything else for technology?
No.
Other education, our math givings, our November's theme is, uh, go off and running. Uh, Ms. Keller, um, Ms. Banazak are doing a nice job, they put this together for us. So, uh, today, the, uh, community foundation did donate pumpkin pies to every classroom, K to five, uh, as this is fraction week, uh, focusing on fractions.
Mr. Souls, I think you need to mention that everybody needs to see Kevin's math giving pie.
I do have a tie for the occasion.
Yes, well, thank you, Mr. Squires, for participating.
We should have a picture.
In your shared folder, I did share the survey from Mr. Lick on the valedictorian salutatorian and go to the, the college system, uh, so that is there for you to take a look at. Uh, we, we received the spring musical proposal, which was for the Addams Family. Uh, I believe this was supposed to be done about five or six years ago, and it's now coming back. It got canceled during the COVID years.
Pandemic, yeah.
Yeah. And then, uh, you know, we were lucky enough, uh, Doc Solomon put in for us to host the Western PA Assistant Superintendent's Forum that went off very well. Uh, Doc, would you like to tell everyone about that, that day's events?
Uh, yes, it, it took over two years for us to host it, so, uh, but I thought it was worth it, because it gave an opportunity for my peers and other schools to come see, you know, what things happen here at West Mifflin. Uh, it was, it was a great afternoon, uh, there was a lot of people involved. We had twenty assistant superintendents come. When they came, they saw the new covering that we put inside by Mr. Mann to the vestibule, did the limits of sight when you come in, it's very short. The NHS students then escorted them up to the LGI room that has been painted, it looks fantastic, nice and fresh. We had a couple of presentations up there, uh, most of them, the focus was on the Titan Safety 365. Chief Wil did a wonderful draw with that. And then Noel Haney did, uh, a combined one, she talked about the tap team, which kind of blew everybody away, so I was very happy with that. And also talked about the Adel front. And, uh, there was one other school district in Allegheny, uh, and they were all impressed with that. Finished up, like, talked a little bit about the, uh, T's Trail in the upcoming. But then we went down to the Titan Shop, which is, you know, actually Titan Shop 3.0 right now. It's, it's online pictures and video. It's absolutely beautiful if you haven't seen it. Best part about it is it came zero cost to taxpayers, because that's the salt money that was reoccurred throughout. So, that, it was fantastic. Uh, we did, we looked at the maker space as well, you know, explained to them how much revenue is made from that program, along with, you know, the students gaining skills and knowledge, you know, retail in their own business, and so that, that was a success, too. From that point on, I made it out of carton. So, you know, the other principals helped me out, and we sent a group down to the outdoor steam room, the sports arena, we had another group go to the independent living lab, and the Titan laundromat. You know, we had, uh, and we had a couple other groups look at the alumni hall and the athletic hall. So, uh, I had to kick them out at the end. Normally, you go to these, and everybody's like, all right, it's time to go, but everybody stayed, which was really nice, and I got a lot of compliments afterwards, which I was, I was not anticipating any of the ones.
What are some of the districts that attended?
Uh, we had, uh, Beaver, Franklin Regional, uh, North Allegheny, uh, we had.
I saw Steel Valley.
Steel Valley.
Deer Lakes.
Deer Lakes, uh, oh, boy. Some of them were.
I was just curious, like, what the, what sort of the makeup was, the?
Yeah, the Beaver one was definitely the farthest. Black Hawk, uh, came, um, yeah, you know, I mean.
That's interesting, that's just, it's like, so that's a different, those are different kinds of communities.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, Claretton was there, um, and a few others. But like I said, uh, it, it was great, I was, I was very happy. And it was a goal of mine for two years to get this here, to get this opportunity. I wanted to make the most of it, and, uh, you know, I feel very satisfied with the job and was very appreciative of everybody helping out, so, it turned out really well. And here's an article online, you, uh, Ms. Mobley did a fantastic job of writing and taking pictures, if you want to read more about it.
We asked the committee to go ahead and recommend putting the spring musical proposal on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else for education committee? Okay, lastly, we have policy zero-zero-five. Mr. Squires provided us with some administrative regulations or procedures or processes for our committees. It will not be the actual part of the policy, but as you approve the policy, it will be recognized by the board as an administrative regulation, an AR.
And this was the detailed descriptions for the committees and liaisons. I appreciate, I, I sent that out to the board to look over and review, and I appreciate the feedback and support. And I know for technology, there was very little to go off of to start a framework. Mr. Blazovich helped out big time with, uh, getting something outlined for that. So, thank you guys for taking a look at that and being involved in it.
So, we will ask the committee to go ahead and recommend that become a policy zero-zero-five AR, or one dash one, or dash zero. I'll have to go look at it.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Zager?
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Steel Center?
I will have a report next week.
Thank you, Mr. Donohue. Eighteen solicitors report.
I have no reports tonight, Mr. President.
Uh, nineteen old business, twenty new business. Motion to adjourn?
A motion.
A motion by Mr. Gados.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zager, meeting adjourned.